I need a motion to open the meeting, correct?
Motion to open the meeting on the stormwater bylaw.
I second that.
All in favor? Rick?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
With that, I don't have the article on that. Is Merrily or Pat on board?
I'm here.
Okay.
Basically, what we want to do, basically, what we want to do is change the regulations to include the phosphorus and TSS totals. And so, so we had suggested a whole new set of regulations.
Okay. Do we have the, I don't have the article in front of me that was in the paper for this, the previous one? Do I have to read that one, Julie?
Um, I don't know if you have to read the full article, just the changes, I would think. Correct, Pam?
I, just the changes is sufficient. Yep. Everything else is on file in my office as well.
One second. Okay, is that the, section seven floodplain overlay district?
No.
Okay.
No.
Then I don't have it. Do you have it, Merrily, in front of you?
I don't. All right, let's see. Um, all right, we're under stormwater. So, um, the cha, the changes that were made under section 5.0 applicability, part A activities requiring a permit, no person shall perform any of the following land disturbing activities without first obtaining the stormwater management permit from the stormwater review board. Number one, any land disturbing activity resulting in a land disturbance of, it was 5,000 square feet or more, and it's being changed to 40,000 square feet or more. Number two is development or redevelopment involving multiple separate activities in discontinuous locations or on different schedules. If the activities are part of a larger common plan of development that altogether disturbs, the old number was 5,000 square feet or more of land, and it's being updated to 40,000 square feet or more of land. Number three, paving or other change in surface material over an area of, it was 5,000 square feet or more, and it's being changed to 10,000 square feet or more, causing a significant reduction of permeability or increase in runoff. Uh, number four, construction of a new drainage system or alteration of a new drainage system, serving a drainage area of more than it was 5,000 square feet, it's being changed to 10,000 square feet. And number five, any other activity altering the surface of an area exceeding, it was 5,000 square feet, it's being changed to 40,000 square feet, that will or may result in increased stormwater runoff flowing from the property into a public way or the municipal storm drain system. Still under 5.0 applicability, part B exemptions, the following land disturbing activities may be performed without a stormwater management permit. Number one is being updated, it's any activity that will disturb an area less than, it was 5,000 square feet, and it's being updated to 40,000 square feet. It also says this exception may not be applied for continuous contiguous properties that may have been subdivided and/or are attributed to multiple separate owners. Still under 5.0 applicability, part E now is general permits. Section one just has in addition to the beginning of part one, that I think may, may be a typo that was missed before. It says the stormwater review board shall have the authority to develop a general stormwater management permit, which is a GSMP for specific types of projects, such as construction of a deck patio retaining while existing driveway expansion shed and swimming pool. The whole rest of that paragraph is the same, it's just that beginning part, at the beginning, the stormwater review board shall have the authority to develop a general stormwater management permit. It was just missing. And then finally, under section 10.0 variances, it's really kind of a typo issue too, they're adding the word B in the middle of it. No variance request will be granted unless the applicant shows that, and it goes on, so it's kind of just fixing some grammar. And that's it for that stormwater bylaw update.
Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. That's, you don't know what number that is in the town warrant, do you, Julie?
It's, I think it's article 15, let me just make sure. Yeah, that's article 15. And the appendix is number two, if you're looking at like the full printout of the warrant. The appendix two gives all of the strike through and underline.
That's also by the Board of Selectmen and the Conservation Committee, correct?
It is.
Okay. Oh, is that, that straight with you, Merrily?
Yep, that's great.
Okay, is there a motion to accept that? That's an article change, is that correct, Julie?
That's correct.
Is there a motion to accept the article 15 as re-corrected, article 15, and I believe articles will keep with article 15, requested by the Board of Selectmen and Conservation Commission? Is there a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor? Roll call. Rick?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Unanimous, we will accept that. Now shall we go back to our original? Do we have to go out of this public hearing and back into the regular public hearing, or continue back where we wanted to start at 10:05?
I would say we, is it, is it all one public hearing, Mark?
Yes.
Yeah, you're not, you don't have any, any other business.
Okay, so we, we can go back to our regular 10 o'clock meeting?
Yes, yep.
With that, at 10:05, it was proposed to amend the Kushner General Bylaw zoning article eight, section seven flood, floodplain review overlay district as follows, replacing section 7.2 with floodplain district boundaries and floodplain requirements, B, amending section 7.2A by replacing the existing Bristol County flood insurance rate maps with new data effective 7/1/2021, and C is adding a new section 7.3 definitions. Is there a motion to accept that as written?
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor? Rick?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
That amended general bylaw eight, section seven passes. Next one, proposal to amend the Kushner General Bylaws Article 8, 3.3C14 as follows. Add section A to include subsection numbers one through eight, changing of wording of A8 to read, no common driveway shall be constructed within 75 feet of any principal or accessory structure existing or to be thereby. That was, B, C is replace subsection number nine with section B to read as follows. All principal and accessory structures shall be serviced by a driveway that is located within 150 feet of those structures, and which driveway must meet the minimum construction standards herein specified. So we're taking that section B out and putting section A8 in, is that correct, Jim?
Well, the original wording, Mark, there were two sections under that title. And in the original bylaws, that, that section was related to driveway construction standards. And then the first part, A, one through eight, was all relative to common driveway construction standards, and B was simply just driveways. And that's the distinction. When Henry changed it, he took out B and made it number nine, which included that section then in common driveways, and it just doesn't work there, that, then, then, the last two sections, number eight and number nine, become conflicting with one another. So I think it's important to leave B the way it was. And it just will read, all principal accessory structures shall be serviced by driveway that is located within 150 feet of those structures, and which driveways must meet the minimum construction standards here and specified. That just says that emergency vehicles need to be able to locate themselves at least within 150 feet of whatever structure they're serving. And the other section eliminates the 150 feet and reduces it to 75 feet, but all the other wordings, one through eight, remain the same.
Gentlemen, is there a motion to accept it, the changes as written?
Make a motion to accept the changes as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Rick?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
With that, that proposed amendment to general bylaws, Article 8, 3.3C14 as follows, passes.
Just, just as a comment, Mark?
Go right ahead.
If we ever do get a, a planer again, I, I would like to revisit the, all the articles relative to common driveways and, and retreat lots, to make sure it is accomplishing what, what the intent of accomplishment was with those, with those two things, which was basically to prevent or to have an alternative development option to a bunch of short sections of subdivision roadways. I mean, that was, that was the sole purpose of these things in the beginning, is to look at ways that would decrease the density of building, which retreat lot, common driveway does, and also to, again, provide that alternative to a bunch of short sections of subdivision roads all over town, which is what was happening prior to the, to the retreat lot, common driveway section, or the, prior to the retreat lot, common driveway ordinances being created. I mean, even, even the 75 feet from additional structures, I mean, if I want to put in a subdivision road, I don't have, I, I don't have to be any distance away from anybody's structure. And, and again, you know, we'll go with this article the way it is now, but I'm not sure that what people want is a subdivision road with more housing density right next to them or not. I may be wrong about that, you know, if, if that's not a good way of looking at things, that's fine. I just, I just think that that whole development alternative needs to be re-looked at in a, in a very, very hard, very point by point way. That's all.
I agree, Rick, and I know there's been conversation even about maybe getting rid of common driveways, which I think is the wrong way to go. It kind of breaks my heart when you drive down some, like even on Keene Road right now, there are three retreat lots that were developed. They all have individual driveways, and they're all right next to one another. I mean, there isn't 20 feet that separates these three driveways, and that just doesn't seem to make any sense. I think, you know, had it been one driveway that accessed the other, the, the three houses that are there, it would have looked much better. We wouldn't have, you know, taken down as many trees, there wouldn't be a need for much drainage. I think common driveways need to be encouraged, but I, I agree with you, I think to take a look at, at all of that would really help.
It really needs to all fit together. It's interesting that you brought up the Keene Road one. Are the initial proposal for Keene Road was, I, you know, it's been a long time. It was at least, it was a short subdivision road with six or seven lots on it. And again, to, to my way of thinking, rather than have six or seven new houses and another short section of subdivision road that the town needs to take care of ultimately, is you're much better off with three houses on bigger lots, that people take care of their own driveways. And it doesn't, that's less load on the school system, and that's less load on the, the Department of Public Works to take care of these short sections of, of subdivision road. And their work, again, it was, it was probably close to 20, 25 years ago, but that's what was happening. It was, there was one proposed development after another, four short sections of subdivision road with, I want to say six to eight lots on it. Okay, that's, I, I won't, I won't say anymore, said my.
Moving on to the next one, proposed to amend a Kushner General Bylaw zoning article eight by adding a subsection H to section 3.3.1 and section 3.3.2, and adding section I to 3.3.4 as follows. No materials or supplies shall be stored or permitted to remain on any portion of property outside of the building constructed thereon. Any unfinished products or semi-finished products stored on the property outside of the building shall be confined to the rear half of the property and shall be appropriately screened on all sides, but shall in no instance be placed on that side of the building paralleling an existing or proposed street. No waste material or refuse shall be dumped upon or permitted to remain upon any part of said property outside of the building constructed thereon. In English, what's that mean, Jim?
Well, it kind of goes along, Mark, with our junk bylaw. What I'm trying to do is to make people not have open displays of all of their refuse. And, you know, this kind of will add a little bit of push to me enforcing, you know, the, the property down on South Main Street where they're just bringing all kinds of stuff that I get constant complaints about. I've had a number of other properties where people just come in and store, you know, all of their equipment and stuff. There was one directly behind the Cumberland Farms here in town. Fortunately, after pressing that gentleman for years and years, he sold the property. I have a young man now who's going to build a house. And it's the same around town where people have, you know, whether it's commercial lots or residential lots, they just bring in all this stuff and just store it right in their front yard. This way I can make them, you know, screen it. I, I've had conversations with, you know, Dave DeRoche, even about a property up at 1425 Main Street where, you know, they have all kinds of trash, you know, they, they put up a fence, which I required, and now all the junk's moving right into the front yard. This gives me the enforcement capability of going after these folks and saying, listen, you just can't do it. They're bringing down property values, you know, all around town.
Okay, gentlemen, thank you, Jim, for that. Gentlemen, is there a motion?
I, I'll make a motion to accept it as read. Hopefully, unfortunately, with that, that bylaw, it's going to require a certain amount of, of discretion from the enforcing authorities. We'll try to give him some additional ammunition to at least prevent junk piles from happening in the front yards.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
With that, that article is accepted on that one. Next one, proposed to amend the Kushner General Bylaw zoning article eight, section 3.3.4, subsection E by deleting subsection six and seven, and adding in their place the following section to read as follows. Section 3.3.4E6, Upland Circle. No dwelling, building, or structure having a permitted use in any district shall be erected on a lot unless the lot has an area within the bound, within its bounds which encompass an upland circle with minimum diameter equal to 90% of the required frontage, and within the frontage or a distance equal to the frontage at the front yard setback line must pass. Jim, would you be kind enough to explain that one, please?
Yeah, this is really in relationship to the change of the, the residential village district. You know, we changed the zoning from 60,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet, and I think one of the reasons was, you know, to try to increase the density within the village district or within areas that had sewer. The problem is, is that a lot of the land that we have in those areas are wet. And, and as I've seen some of those lots being developed, you know, the ground is so wet, the foundations are going in on grade, and then, you know, land is being elevated up to meet the, the main level of those living spaces. So what's happening are, are lawns and everything from the dwelling are draining directly back into the wetlands because the wetlands are so close. What this does, it, it kind of creates an area that you can have a legitimate building lot right in the front of these properties and, you know, not have the required impact to the wetland that we have. I mean, there are some properties on La Bonte Street where, you know, there's a brook that runs directly behind them, and you know from the grass and from anything else, any other landscaping, all your, your pesticides, herbicides, your fertilizers, everything's going to run right down that grass and into those, into that brook. And I see this on a pretty continual basis in the village.
This is village district only, is the?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
That's what that, I don't have the section in front of me, that section three.
3.3.0 subsection E strictly residential village.
Okay.
I would make a motion, we accept the article as written.
Mr. Chairman, can we have some discussion on this bylaw, please?
You certainly may, just please introduce yourself, we know who you are, but the people out in TV land might not.
For the record, I'm Dave DeViggen, I live at 33 Ansel White Drive. This, uh, the way it's run through the legal ad is different than what's written in the article in town meeting, so that's my first issue. You don't have matching language in either what was published and advertised versus what's on the warrant. If you, if you match up the language, it doesn't match. You just read, it said, no dwelling, building, or structure having permitted use in any district. That's not what's written in the warrant. And that, that concerns me, the way that's been legally run as a legal ad, because it says in any district. So although Jim's intent may be for village, the village residence district, it says in any district. So one could interpret that means throughout the entire town. And I think, you know, for that reason, it should be tabled and not brought before town meeting, because in any district has a significant impact for the rest of the town. For instance, I'll give you a perfect example, somebody on North Main Street owns 300 feet of frontage along North Main Street, a public way. They may have a field along the front that's only 50, 60, 70 feet deep, that's upland, and then it turns into a wetland, and then they own 10 acres of upland in the back. They legally have right now two A and R lots. This thing goes through, this says you got to have an upland circle, 90% of that frontage, so you need a circle, 135 foot diameter, it has to be all upland. If you don't, you don't have a building, a buildable lot. So guess what, that, that's going to force them to do, build a road to the back of the property just to access it, because they don't have, their frontage is junk. So I think that this, this bylaw, the key word being upland circle, a lot of towns have the shape factor, they use the same formula, that you got to have 85 or 90% of the front, uh, frontage as a, as a circle, so that you don't contort the lot lines. This actually takes away people's property where they have a bunch of upland in the back, tons of frontage in the front, but they don't have that upland circle area in the front. So I think that, I, I think this, uh, the way this is written or advertised, it's flawed, and this, there could be serious issues and repercussions. I further question any article that, that has, I, I think, I think all the articles should be tabled, in my opinion, because legality of having a public hearing during a workday at 10:00 AM, where you're supposed to be getting public input. I, I think maybe it's legally correct, you know, you're under the law, but it's, I think it skirts the intent of it, which is to get the general public a chance to comment on bylaws that being brought before town meeting that could impact people who own property throughout town. And I think that this one needs to be studied a little more before it's, it's probably before the town meeting, so I urge the planning board not to support this article at this time. Thank you.
Well, it certainly is a problem if the, what's advertised in the paper is not what we're having hearing on today. I, I didn't realize that that was the case. I would suggest to the chairman that this particular article, we table at this time to, so that we can get it properly advertised and have a, a proper public hearing for it.
Can I just comment? Dave, you're saying that it wasn't advertised properly. This is exactly the way it's written in the town meeting warrant.
Well, that's, that's, well, I guess my question is, is it or isn't it? I mean, if it.
I, I have both in front of me. I have the article, and I also have, I have the town meeting warrant.
The warrant has the language taken out, that, the district.
Oh, okay, when was that taken out?
That was.
This was advertised, this was advertised two weeks ago.
So town council had, when they did their review, they, they took that out.
Okay, so why can't we, why can't we just amend the article to read as town council approved? Would that, would that suffice, Dave?
I don't think so. You can't run a legal ad where the language is different than what you're putting on the warrant.
Yeah, that, that's, that's my understanding also, David.
But you can amend the article.
Well, yeah.
You, you can't make the article more restrictive, but you can make it less restrictive, and that's what this does.
It would make it less restrictive, so that is.
It's perfectly legitimate.
Yes.
So what is it? Go ahead, Rick.
I don't know, we still, we still have the issue. I, I mean, certainly, we can, we can recommend changes to the bylaw for town meeting, but to actually have the wording different in the, in the, in the warrant that is advertised, I'm, I'm not sure about that one. It doesn't, that just doesn't sound correct to me. I know we can change things at town meeting to make things less restrictive, but in terms of the, the article, I always thought that the article had to match what was advertised.
As, as Jim had mentioned, it can be made less restrictive, but not more restrictive. And you would be taking out, right now, according to the way it was advertised, it says in any district. So by taking that out and strictly using the verbiage of the 3.3.4 subsection E, that would restrict it only to that one district, allowing it in other districts.
Okay, all right, I think that's, that's a legitimate.
But this one only has to be in the village district, correct?
Correct, that's what 3.3.4 is.
Okay, no, I'm just trying to find it. So the motion is to?
Accept it as read, that's on the table right now.
Yeah, but you have to take something out by the.
Right, so the recommendation to the Board of Selectmen that you would accept it and recommend it to the, I'm sorry, to town meeting would be to take out the use in any district.
Which is the way it would be read on town meeting floor. The warrant article says it that way, that's the way it would be read.
Just, but you can't take it out, having permitted use in any districts?
So the way it's written on the warrant just says, no dwelling, billing, building or structure shall be erected on a lot unless the lot has an area within its bounds which encompasses an upland circle. And it goes on with the same language, so it just took out that little phrase of um, in a, you know, in the permitted district or whatever.
Okay, and again, three point three point four E or three point three point four is the uh, village district section.
That's correct.
Correct.
Okay, then, all right, we'll uh, we'll let the the legal people uh. Argue about that later on, then, I would make, I would continue the motion that we accepted as read. Or I would restate it, that motion's already on the table.
Stated that any, any district will be taken out.
Correct.
That's correct, that the wording.
Having permitted use in any district will be taken out, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that the way you want it, Jim, having permitted use in any district is taken out?
That's eliminated, correct.
Okay.
Okay, then I would make a motion that we accept it with the following. With the following revision, that having permitted use in any district under. The fourth article will be deleted, and that will leave this just as effective in the uh, the village district area.
I second.
Can you say that one more time, Rick?
Can I say it the same way, probably not. All right, I would make a motion that we accept the article as read, that would be article four. As amended, that the, under section three point three point four E upland circle. That having permitted use in any district be deleted, period.
Okay.
And that, and that will, that will leave the article only effective in the village district.
Correct, thank you.
Where are we, we need a second on this one?
Second, yeah.
All in favor, Rick?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Moving on to the next one, proposal to amend Article general bylaws zoning Article eight, section three point three point one by eliminating subsection thirteen. Light manufacturing and renumbering those items which follows.
Now, this is my suggestion, Mr. Chairman, I just don't feel that anywhere in the community, light manufacturing should be allowed, especially in the RA district. Which is what that one refers to. I can't believe that we would have some of the subdivisions that we have, which are fairly elegant, and somebody being able to open up a light manufacturing plant next door.
That's interesting, I mean, of course, a lot of the. The north end of town was uh, used to be a bunch of contractors and a bunch of people with. Side businesses in their, in their, in their garage or out and back. I don't know. The, it's by special permit?
Yes.
Yeah, there's plenty of time for for comment, but I mean, if somebody's got a a lathe in his garage and he's turning out parts for whatever reason, I mean. It, I don't know, I'm not sure that that. Should be an unallowed use, I mean, to me, the special permit regulation should take care of it. Uh, there's no, there's no uh, legal. Reason that you have to issue a special permit, you can pretty much deny one for any, any reason you'd like. I mean, we haven't had a lot of big light manufacturing things go up in that section of town with with the land as valuable as it is today. I don't know. I'm I'm fifty fifty on that one.
Yeah, I guess the way I looked at it is that we do have a home occupation bylaw. And the home occupation is is allowed under certain circumstances. By definition, particularly in in session one point two. But really, that's up to the board, I mean, I, it doesn't really affect me, and and you're right, Rick, um, we really haven't had anybody who's, you know, suggested doing this. It it just has a way of growing when you have people who open up something and they begin something else. And then, you know, it becomes an enforcement issue with me and uh. And I guess I'm just trying to make my load a little lighter.
Understand.
Can we table this and bring it up in the next? Uh, town warrant, is that, it has to be town warrant, correct?
I I think that would be fine, Mr. Chairman.
I would, I would recommend that we table. Article five at this time.
Is there a second?
I second, yeah.
All in favor, Rick?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
That article number five will be tabled, next one, propose to amend a Kushner general bylaws of zoning Article eight, section one point two. Definitions for street or way as follows. Street or way, a public way, a private way shown on a plan approved under the provisions of the subdivision control law. Or a private way in existence when the provisions of the subdivision control law become effect in town. Having in the opinion of the town planning board suitable grades and adequate construction. To serve the proposed use of land abutting thereon or served thereby and for the installation of municipal services. To serve such land and the building erected to or to be erected thereon. Having a minimum pavement width of twenty-two feet and a minimum layout width of thirty feet. All yours, Jim, that just, everything in town now has to have twenty-two and thirty?
Well, the way, a number of years ago, this is actually exactly the way it was written. Um, I believe it was changed in two thousand fifteen, I had a discussion with Henry, really. Thinking that in some circumstances, the planning board should have the prerogative to make a determination as to how much pavement they want to have. Um, sometimes you have a three lot subdivision, you really want to pave twenty-two feet, um, it may not be necessary. I mean, I live on a private way right now where the pavement width is only twelve feet, it serves as probably forty houses. Um, you know, there are little turnoffs here and there, but uh, you know, I, at the time, I guess um. That was the thought, and uh, I think right now the board of selectmen feel that it shouldn't have been taken out, they want to put back in.
Interesting.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Please go right ahead, sir, just again, who is it?
Uh, Dave DeVigman?
Okay, sorry, I didn't see your picture on the TV.
That's okay, um, I understand the history of that this wasn't the bylaw and then was taken out. And my concern is the last half of the 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 end result, which is underlying. Having a minimum pavement width of twenty-two feet and a minimum layout width of thirty feet. That makes no sense whatsoever. Because if you go around town, Keen Road, Major Street, Lake Street. Hamlin Street, none of these roads are twenty-two feet of pavement, does that mean that they're not streets or ways in the town anymore? Um, we have Morse's Lane, fifteen sixteen foot wide paved road, Ward Street, eighteen foot wide paved road. That makes no sense, especially since the subdivision rules and regs require a fifty-foot layout. So I, it's the end of that whole paragraph that makes no sense because it's seems to me it's going to take. It's going to take away from the planning boards making a determination, it conflicts with the the earlier part of the paragraph where the, you know, uh, private way in existence. Having in the opinion of the town's planning board suitable grades and adequate construction, well, that all gets stricken, uh, stricken if it has to be twenty-two feet of pavement. And it has to be a thirty-foot wide right of way, so you're going to have people coming in with thirty-foot wide right of ways, I mean. The the end of that whole paragraph makes no sense. Furthermore, my understanding is there's an article fourteen being proposed at town meeting. Um, proposing to spend twenty-five thousand dollars for an engineering, an independent engineering company to go through the entire bylaws. That's a great idea. And, you know, it's a sentence like this whole paragraph that they would evaluate and come up with something that's a little more clearer and makes a lot more sense. The way this is written, it makes no sense whatsoever to me, I don't even know what it, what what does the end result mean? That nothing can be more than, uh, everything's got to be at least twenty-two feet of pavement, so if somebody came in with an A and R plan for Morse's Lane, which is sixteen feet of pavement. Sorry, you can't, uh, you can't use Morse's Lane, or you got to upgrade the whole thing to twenty-two feet of pavement, is that what that means? I don't know, I I would question the whole paragraph. I don't question the, uh, you know, the desire for the select board to have a minimum standard for the town. Um, but this paragraph as written is is a complete mess. Thank you.
Thank you for your response. And that article, I think that article thirteen. Reads, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds to sum of twenty-five thousand dollars. For the purpose of hiring a consultant to review and update the town zoning bylaws. Including all costs incidental and related thereto, or to take any action therefore, or in relation thereto. I would rather see us have a town planner than take twenty-five thousand dollars and ask a consultant to help us with the zoning bylaws, that's only my personal opinion, gentlemen. But we do need a town planner, we do need a secretary for the planning board, uh, our secretary general will be leaving in June first. Uh, I need all the help I can get, I can't do this by myself, and uh. I appreciate everybody's help, but I think we do need a planner, and a planner is. I don't know who the consultant will be, will it be a planner, will it be somebody? Uh, a consulting firm that'll just tell us what to do with the bylaws, and is twenty-five thousand dollars enough?
I do agree with you, Mark, not my call, but I do agree with you.
I just understood that, I believe that was from the selectmen, Julie, is that correct?
Yeah, so the the thought process would be if this is approved at town meeting, we'll be able to do an RFP. Um, and, you know, go out for bed and see um, who comes in and um, hopefully get a consultant who can work on um, the bylaws. While you also have a planner, I know a lot of people, when we talked about getting the planner to come in, the thought process was that that person could also review the bylaws. But I think um, it's pretty clear, we have a lot of um, projects that are up and coming. And a review of the bylaws should be done now and not wait for a planner to get adjusted and catch up on the backlog. Um, and then start reviewing while they're doing their other duties. We have the proposal for um, the gifts to give area for, that we're hoping to conquer in the fall, and I think. There's just a lot, there's a lot of bylaws that we need to look at now and that we need to look at for the future, so. The consultant being here while the the new planner would be here, um, so he can work as a team with Jim and the planning board. Um, is is kind of the end goal, and that's what we were thinking in having it be a separate person, consultant. Person, be whatever it will be.
I understand, gentlemen, is there a motion on this street away? Do we pass it, table it, change it?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Hi, uh, Mark Francois.
Okay.
Mark Francois, three oh one Perry Hill Road. Um, I have to agree with everything that Mr. DeVigman said. Uh, I I don't think that this makes sense. Uh, it takes away from the board being able to make decisions on private ways. Um, I can totally understand if it's a public way and the town is responsible for maintaining uh, said way. But if it's a private way, and, you know, there aren't twenty, thirty, forty houses, it's a it's a small private way. Um, I think the planning board has the discretion, should have the discretion to approve a gravel road. We've had gravel roads for hundreds of years, we have lots of gravel roads, uh, private roads in the cushion in all surrounding towns. I don't feel that this should be something that should be mandated to the homeowner and putting that type of an expense. Which asphalt is an extreme expense uh, on the landowner, um, and I also agree that twenty-two feet is extreme number. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, gentlemen, street away.
Um, I I would make a motion that, and I'll make the motion first and then I'll give the reasoning afterwards. I would make a motion that we also table this article until we can get some some planning help uh. In place, one way or another, and and revisit it at that time. The, it it's very difficult to deal with a lot of the old roads or the old ways in town. Uh, as it is for the, for the planning board and for the building inspector as as the zoning enforcement official. I mean, you've got a couple roads in town, uh, like Hebert Road off of Keen, off of uh, Keen Road. Which is uh, probably does not meet the modern standard of of a traversable way. Uh, you've got uh, Wood Road, uh, which is actually in in the back next to me, which has some of the the same issues. Uh, and then we have also one uh, subdivision in town that has no legal access at all to it. Uh, that's uh, in back of uh, it's up near the lakes. It's not Hebert Road, uh, but it's another subdivision that uh. It it, I, it, this, again, there's no legal access to it at this point. Uh, we need some wording. To help us deal with those situations and others, uh, where we've got twelve and sixteen foot wide gravel ways that that access. Other sections of town, I mean, do we want to allow additional development on roadways like that? I don't know, I don't have that question, I don't have the answer to that, but I think there's enough. Public interest in this, or will certainly be. If it's enacted this way, that we should table it at this, at this time and, you know, maybe revisit it next year. Uh, hopefully with some additional uh, planning help and uh, some easier way to have a a real public hearing. And and not these zone meetings. But that, that's my motion to table it at this time.
Motion made to table, is there a second?
Second, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Rick? Brian?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
This article six will be tabled, and I think, is that it for us?
Yes.
We took care of the stormwater review first. With that, does that make us all legal beagle, Julie and Pam?
Yeah, what was the uh, the verdict on the flood plain, I'm sorry, I think that's when I had to skip out.
Flood plain's been approved.
It was.
Yeah, accept it as read, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So you've got, everything passes except the article four has having permitted use in any district taken out?
Yeah.
Number five is tabled, number six is tabled. Everybody agree upon that?
Yeah.
Yes.
My recollection.
With that, I want to thank you very much, everybody for their time, is there uh, anybody want to say anything else? With that, is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
I second that.
All in favor, Rick?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye, with that, thank you, folks, appreciate your time, sorry for the mess up, but we got it done.
And hope to see everybody at town meeting tonight, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.